We're going to put into capital, which is probably that 2 million to account for it. The firewall, high availability replacement. The breaching training prop, $11,000 for sheriff's office, and this is a, I believe it's a door, where they could train to break, you know, to break into homes and handle that type of thing. And it's reusable, I believe. Am I right? Not to break into homes, but you know. There's my joke.
If it's, if it's, if it's capital and we're planning on having it, my thought would be is we're planning on having it for a long time.
We might bring it to court so we could all take out aggression.
So I hope we don't totally destroy the thing every time.
The next one is going to be International Law Enforcement Educators and Trainers Association. This is between the sheriff's office as well as the jail. Until we see the quote in the contract, we think, well, this might be a sabida, and so we want to count for it properly. The fusis is part of the real-time crime center. Remember, this was part of a grant that was awarded to the sheriff's office. And this is when the county will be asked to take over this system, since the grant is no longer active. And we will need to review to make sure that is a sabida or not. The next one is going to be secure locker for transport and quartermaster. This is to lock up their weapons and some other items. Procedure chair for the medical division, $18,200. A power cot for the exam room for the medical division, $15,500. For the brassist's center, I know that we hold several events. They're requesting a stage current replacement. I don't think it has been replaced since early 1990s, I believe. And so it's time for replacement, especially for holding functions there for the public. The next one is a new project regarding inside and outside camera enhancements. The goal is to have some security cameras on the outside of the building and probably scattered out in the parking lot to view certain things. The brassist's center, if you haven't noticed, there's not a signage on the building. So it's been requested to, to put a sign showing that it's brassist's center. I think you're able to see on the backside, but when you drive up to the front, the museum has a sign. But in that, there's really no signage stating that this is a brassist's center in the front. And so it's been requested to go ahead and add that to the building. The next item is assembly, one and two AV upgrade. Currently, those rooms do not have adequate AV equipment. And this will allow for smaller conferences or meetings to hold with updated computer equipment. $155,000. The next one is the county ag extension building. It has been requested regarding a storage building built to hold some of the group items. Let it be for building or some other agricultural items. And this will be over at the county, current county ag building. For $150,000, what that $150,000 will do is just for architectural design and to make sure we have the space to do it. The next is going to be Rotten Bridge. It's 18-yard half round and dump, $58,000. A broom sweeper. This unit was totaled this year, and so we've been holding off as long as possible to purchase it. It's needing to be added to the capital budget for next year, $85,000. The next one is going to be repair and replace the truck scale.
When you say, when you say totaled?
It was in a wreck, I believe. And so it's not function for Rotten Bridge, but this unit was able to be transferred to expo to, to be used for their parking lot. But it's not drivable regarding on the county roads.
But what was, okay, so what did we, what did we receive in an insurance claim for replacement?
I'm looking for risk management to tell me.
I don't, I don't have that exact number, but I think it was like 20 something thousand. It was, because it's so old.
Okay.
So it was already basically fully depreciated, so.
And when we get the insurance money back, it goes directly to the general fund revenue. It doesn't go specific to that project.
Yeah, that's why I was asking is because the insurance claims come in in general fund, but the expenditures, that they're actually, well, the casualties or whatever that happened don't relate to that. And I always like to see a net number. It was difficult to get a net number on the roof replacements that we did. And hard to figure out, okay, so how much did we, are we needing new capital? Thanks.
And we did that, I think, twice when we did receive the roof replacement insurance checks. We did make sure we transferred that amount to the capital side of it. But that was the only, only time we ever recognized that revenue coming in.
That was a big claim.
And we wanted to make sure it was reserved for the roofs.
Multiple big claims.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
The next one is going to be the repair and replacement for the truck scale for $100,000, just to make it in working order. The mini excavator, this is addition to the Rotten Bridge. Average renting cost is $90,000. As you can see, as we purchased it, it's $93,000. And so it's a one-time purchase, so that $90,000 of rental fees will go away. The tilt trailer, this is an addition.
Yeah, man.
Oh, go ahead.
How long have we been renting one for? Ninety? 95% of what one would cost.
I can get with Rotten Bridge.
Yeah.
A lot of times when Rotten Bridge notices that the rental fee for a certain equipment has go above and beyond the actual cost of a new one, that's when they start requesting it. And so this one, and rental cost has gone up regarding some of the backhoes and personally, I know, but I'm sure regarding our contract, it has increased as well.
Yeah, $3,700 additional eliminates $90,000 a year.
Yes, sir.
Let's start digging more in that mine.
Oh, we can.
Okay.
Grab an excavator to do it.
We can uncover it.
Regarding the, or do I leave off? Regarding the tilt trailer, this is addition to the unit. This is $11,800. The next one is going to be a 926 cat wheel loader. It's going to be fitted with a bucket, scale, and printer. This will allow them to weigh items when they lift it in the bucket, rock, dirt, sand, to make sure we get adequate numbers regarding weight to help the auditor. And this is going to be had at the Copperhead Yard. And it's also to make sure that our inventory is calculated correctly. And this is at $242,000. At the bottom, total expenditure budget is $28,410,286. The reserve capital improvement fund balance is at $18 million. What is needed from the general fund to support these projects is $10,320,286. As you have noticed, we did not discuss the medical examiner's office. It has been moved from this fund to the ARPA replacement, to the ARPA grant side. Any questions regarding the general fund for capital improvement? Sorry, the general capital improvement fund. Okay, moving on, we're going to get to this, what we call the debt that we took out for this past couple of years. Oh, we're going to talk about projects not in the proposed budget. So there's going to be certain items that will not be, yes.
So these are things that have been requested?
That have been requested that will not be in the proposed budget. It's going to be transit van for facility services, two of them. One's going to be a white patrol Tahoe, three. And so what this, what this entails, we purchased extra ones this year in hopes that we would have, we won't have to purchase them next year in '26. And so this is going to be taken off the list, and so that's why it's not in the proposed budget. As you can see, we purchased them in FY 2024. The same thing with the silver patrol Tahos. We purchased additional ones this year, seven of them, that were meant for 2025. The next is going to be, it was an extended cab pickup. The order was canceled, and so it was requested, but the PO is canceled, no need. The next is going to be half-ton regular pickup truck.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure I understand that last one.
Regarding the canceled PO.
On the three-quarter ton?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, they just decided they don't need it?
Well, it was ordered twice, because it was during that time when the trucks were not coming in.
Okay.
And so we had to place another order, and then we canceled this other order with a different company. The next is going to be a fleet service software request at $41,000. For IT, physical access control upgrades, what this is at $217,000. This is for the door access monitors, you know, your card at certain locations. They want to do a upgrade countywide. The UPS replacement at remote data center at the jail, $71,000. Courtroom AV upgrades for 472nd Associates Family and Common Areas. And going back to this project until we know what, when the courts start moving around, when 101 North is completed, I think this is when we should really look at the courtrooms and see what needs to be renovated and where. I don't suggest spending a lot of money on the renovation of the AV currently until we really know where things can be moved at. The next is going to be camera maintenance software, $8,000 for IT. This is a backup storage refresh for the data domain expansion, $53,080. Switch replacement for the data, for the remote data center. And thinking of this is, is that when the medical examiner's building is built, that there would be a remote center there as well. And so we would like to hold on replacement at the jail side until this is completed at the medical examiner's office. The next is going to be the Palo Alto Panorama Software Management Platform at $14,000. The motor boot system upgrade. Moto, turbo, sorry. At $6,000. For facility services upgrade, the stormwater containment at the jail. It has been discussed that once we start doing some of these building facility assessments, that this will be part of the, of the assessment for us to look at. And there might be some other areas within that water containment that we will need to do. Instead of fixing one, we need to fix all. The mechanical yard enclosure at the expo is part of the assessment at the expo. And so that has been taken off the list, and it will not be proposed. The relocate water line, $50,000. And this is part of the administration building that's in the front. At the time, it was discussed regarding the envelope portion of it, it might be handled during that. The HVAC plumbing insulation, this is to fix the issues that they're having out there. This is part of the facility assessment that was handled at the expo, which would be part of that. The gate opener of facility services out on Highway 21. The wash rack chase expansion was part of the expo facility assessment. The vertical mast lift, that was an addition for facility services. The sidewalk expansion at the jail, this will be part of the ongoing building assessments for facilities that we will do, or facility assessments. The hostage negotiation rescue phone, this is for the crisis negotiation team. SB 22 has taken care of that. The SWAT pole camera for the SWAT team, SB 22 has taken care of that request. The additional Tahoe for additional position for the sheriff's office, special service deputy. Along with the equipment that goes along with that position, as in handheld radio, axon, which is your dad, your cam, that sorts. SWAT communication, the SB 22 took care of that project. The command radio communications, SB 22 took care of that. The police wanted correction academy, this is cloud base. We instructed that if the sheriff's office has extra money within their budget to look into, because it's going to be split between the sheriff's office as well as the jail. And it was not considered capital at the moment. Crime scene van replacement, I believe that a unit was ordered using SB 22. Special housing unit security enhancement, SB 22 took care of that project. The drone detection security software, SB 22. For the public defender, in case management software, that has been requested using a new grant, and we're still waiting for that. So we're not able to budget until we hear further from the grant. Emergency management is a disaster planning system. This was requested, but we would like to hold off until the new management director comes in to see if there's anything additional that they might need. Rotten Bridge, Harborside Truck, it was due to additional position that was requested, which was not, and so that was taken off the list. As well as a 20-pound two-post vehicle lift, it has been requested to push to, to the, to another year. The total cost is 3.5 million. Are there any questions?
Yeah, what was the total amount? And I'm, I'm very pleased to see that the Senate Bill 22 money is being used for one-time expenditures as opposed to going into ongoing needs to fund types of things. And I really want to compliment y'all for that being your objective and in working with the budget office, because I think, you know, the lieutenant governor continues to say, don't worry about it, the money's always going to be there. But I, I really appreciate y'all taking the, let's be cautious relative to this approach, because if it's not there, we don't have from anything you've done here, any significant recurring expense as a result. And I think that's very wise on y'all's part, so thank you. What is the total amount of the Senate Bill 22 that comes out of this, 3.52 million?
Oh, I'm kidding, let me get my spreadsheet so I can calculate it a little easier. $500,000.
So that's the max, okay. And when do we go under a qualification again?
Based on the population?
Yeah, because this is an annual funding, right?
It's annual fun, funding until we get over, what, 300?
My understanding that the comptroller's already sent out the grant application links, although they do not work.
Awesome. Okay, well, maybe we need to have a conversation with Mr. Hager about that.
Wonderful technology, right?
But, well, no, but I mean, so, and we're, we're looking at an annual. When another 500K opened this year, and the limit population-wise, where it goes down was, what was it?
300,000.
300, okay. We're a long way away from that, too.
Hopefully. Okay, so let me get back to my Excel spreadsheet. Not, we're almost done, so we're going to hit the debt funds regarding a couple of projects. So remember that we discussed earlier the American Rescue Plan Act? So the remaining balance for the ME office is $19,216, and this is what should be remaining for the grant side of it. 15 million is what is going to be transferred into the ARPA fund to cover the 35 million that has been estimated. It was put into the general capital improvement fund, but we're going to move it into the grant side of it.
Because we did, that was the revenue loss.
Yes.
All of that 15.7 million is revenue loss calculation?
It was.
Okay. So that, that entire 35 million that we're estimating is fully funded?
Fingers crossed. I would love to promise something.
The money's in the bank.
The money's in the bank, and so, yes. And so that will be part of the fund balance discussion.
Super.
Okay, and so that is the estimate, 35 million at today's rates. We're waiting to go out for a bid, and so when that comes in, hopefully, it stays under 35 million. But I'm not going to sign in blood. Okay?
Well, now, the revenue loss money still did have the requirement that it had to be allocated by and spent by? Or once it goes into revenue loss, does it become exempt from the Treasury's guidelines?
Commissioners' court, I think, may, is it may? Elected to count salary and wages benefits used as using the revenue loss.
Right.
And so now there's no more requirements on that fund, although there's funds.
That's very good.
I like to say no strings attached, but everything has a string.
The next is going to be 2020 certifications obligations. That was taken out back in, uh, spring of 19 for 2020. We are almost, I'm hoping, spending all this money this next year. Part of this obligation will be $782 put into contingency after some of these projects are budgeted. Within this fund, we have Commissioners' court approve the renovation of the former ag extension. And this is where the Rotten Bridge Department will move into when the Rotten Bridge's building is renovating. And so 2.4 is estimated for that, and these are just high numbers, I'm hoping. We're waiting for the bids to come in on those. As well as the jail kitchen expansion, we still have some things that we need to cover there, $300,000. So we're going to keep it in that same fund. As well as Harper's Ferry Road in Crooked Pass, 2.3. And so out of that contingency, this might have to cover for some of the reconstruction of the Rotten Bridge building. Or if there is a Rotten Bridge heavy equipment that is total, we can use that. But until I get the bids back on the Rotten Bridge, I'll like to, you know, leave that contingency there until those come back so we can get a better estimate.
And that will, that will consume all of the 2020 COs?
I'm hoping.
Okay, so that's, but that's six point, that's 6 million is the balance of?
Yes, that's remaining.
Because those bonds have been sold, but we have not used the funds, correct? Are we in a arbitrage situation on that? Okay. Do y'all have, I mean, so, because rates, short-term rates that we've been getting on that $6 million are much higher. So are we concerned about an arbitrage penalty there?
Yes.
Okay.
We, um.
So the quicker we spend that, the better off we are, because if we do have an arbitrage liability, then it will terminate on the time, at the time these things are expensed.
Last arbitrage class I went to, though, said you had to spend it all within the first 18 months.
When were they issued?
2020, 2021.
Okay, so we issued the full amount?
It was. I remember how much we issued.
Okay.
It was 12, wasn't it?
The purchase was to cover some of the roofs that were damaged.
Right.
And it just took a lot, you know, a while to get those completed, as well as the jail kitchen. You know, that took a little while to get that off the ground. And so some of these projects did take a little longer. But I'm hoping that, or we're hoping that this year we can get rid of this fund.
It was originally 24 million issued.
And that was issued 20?
October 1, 2020.
Okay, and then. All right, tune in tomorrow.
And so, and that was one of the decisions that we thought about is making sure the Harper's Ferry Road would come out of here to get some of the funds pushed out.
You bet? Yeah, I don't want to, I mean, it'd be a shame to write a check for some of this interest we've earned to the federal government, right?
I don't know how much we contract that company now.
Yeah. Nobody figured short, you know, 13-week T-bills would be over 5% for as long as they are either. Okay.
The next one is Fund 4323-0. This is on-system road bond. This is for the Interlupi Estrelas Leonard Road, North 2018, Bushwellburn, William D. Fitch, and Harvey Road. We're rolling what is remaining and what the county auditor stated as fund balance at $17,338. And so we're pushing this, these are currently projects in progress, actually. And so we're moving what will be left into next year for those projects.
Okay, and this is of the?
The current debt.
This is of the?
The current 20.
20 million that we sold?
Yes.
Are we in a potential arbitrage situation here as well? Okay, well, I know we're a lot, I know we're a lot closer on the 18 months.
Well, we issued these in the spring of 2023. So if we spend it all by spring of 2025, we'll be close.
Okay, gotcha. Thanks.
It's going to be the same thing for Fund 4323-1. This is going to be the off-system roads. This is what Rotten Bridge is handling. This is for ITNN. At currently for next year, it's at 6 million. And so once October starts, I would like to sit down with Rotten Bridge and see if there is another road that can do with the remaining balance. I believe it's, it might be 4 million. See if there's something out there that they can use this funding for as well. That's ready to go, as in shovel-ready. Okay? The next one is going to be 2023 certifications of obligations. We took this out for North Wing Sanctuary, 101 North, or the old BIC building currently. It is for the 101 North Building, which has been renamed. We're no longer calling it BIC Building, as there's no building left besides an address. And so now it's 101 North Building currently.
No, it was 101 North not building.
It's kind of different driving, you know, down, not seeing that building. Right now, it's estimated at 16, at 61 million. 10 of that is what is remaining for next year. The rest is going to have to be transferred into this fund to cover 101 North. So 51 million will need to be transferred into this fund from the general fund to cover for the build-out, architect fees, all the bells and whistles that go along with building a building to cover this.
So that's the write-a-check price?
I'm hoping.
Okay, we're estimating the write-a-check price, too?
Yes.
Does it make sense for us to take a look at? And we don't have any 2023 CO money left?
This is part of it.
Okay, the 10 million?
The 10 million.
Okay, so, any, any thought on using for that 51 million remaining? Any thought on that using, going out for debt? Because we're taking our debt service rate, which is uncapped, unrevenue capped, down from, when we talked before, from 4 cents to below, 4 cents to 3.8 cents per hundred?
Yes, and so it will be discussed when it's time to go out for debt. The only thing is if it's not approved for debt, or if the court doesn't go out for debt for this particular project, the funding is going to have to come from somewhere. And if we have a contract at the end of this next year, we will not cut a PO for it if the funding's not there.
Okay, so that's a contingent decision as to how to finance that once we get to that point.
And if we do go out for debt and the court approves it for this project, then we can move that money back to the general fund, but it's up to the court.
Do we anticipate that we're going to be issuing any more referendum debt? Do we anticipate that we're going to be issuing any more referendum debt for ITS in, in, in the next year?
Remember when I accidentally said 20 million and I meant 15 for George Bush?
Right.
That's referendum debt. So yes, spring of 2025, we need 15 million for George Bush raid, uh, grade separation.
Okay, 15 million from ref, okay. We'll take a break. And then.
I'm done.
Oh, you are done?
That's pretty anticlimactic. Curious as to why we took a break?
You got a couple more pages.
Um, do I? Oh, we're done.
Oh, we're done?
Oh, that was just a backup regarding the debt. And so I like to show what the debt looks like and I can go over that, sorry.
Well, you should have said something to the judge.
Well, no, well. I'm a, I'm a follower. I don't break rules. And so if I'm told you something, I try to do it if it's, you know, legal.
This is supporting doc, these last three pages are supporting documents?
Supporting documents, and I could briefly go over that real quick. Are there any more questions regarding the north, 101 North building? Okay. So this is a breakdown regarding the debt we just went over. This is the 2020 certifications of obligations. This is for that 6 million. And you see most of it is going to capital outlay contingency, is that 782,000?
A curiosity. If we don't need that, 782, I mean, if it goes into a project that's a capital project, it makes sense. But if it goes into contingency and we just sit there on it, we still got an arbitrage situation and we've still got.
So we don't know what, we don't, we're not finished with the, the jail kitchen. And that's an estimate, and I want to put it all in there.
Okay.
And I do not know the final bid for the ag re, um, the old ag building remodel as well as the Roden Bridge. And so I would hate to put into specific program until we actually get those true quotes to come in. And then that money will be moved to those proper accounts. Uh, but I will.
So we'll find something?
Oh, yes. If not, I will, I will definitely find something.
I'm pretty sure.
That is, that was approved when we took out the debt. And there's several different things. So for instance, if closer to the, in the year, if we only have 100,000 that's left that's not obligated, um, some of the equipment that's purchasing that's in the general fund capital improvement portion of it, like the motor grader or something, or the broom sweeper, I can request a general entry to be placed here and we could take care of that.
That all falls under the description?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Great.
The next one is going to be on road system that we discussed regarding Relus and Bush. There's that 17 million and it's all in contract services. The off-system, this is for IGNN. And like I stated, in October, I'll sit down with Roden Bridge to get with them regarding any dirt-ready Roden Bridge projects that we can get done pretty fast. And it has to be capital reconstruction. This is the 2023 obligations. This is for the ME. As you can see, there's 10 million that will be in reserve fund balance. The rest is coming from the transfer in, which is 50 million. The total project is 61. And here is the capital improvement fund. You can see that the reserves, which is the fund balance, is 18 million. The transfer in is 10,320,000, totaling 28 million. And then, like I said, here's that 2 million. I wanted y'all to see the 2 million that's specific for contingency up to Commissioners Court. 26 of it is going to be for capital outlay, totaling 28 million. Now, do you want to keep you, keep reminding you that the, that this fund is up to Commissioners Court? Even though it might be departmental specific, it is under Commissioners Court direction. The end.
For now.
For now. Is there any questions regarding what we have reviewed on the current special revenues grants? I hope I answered any questions. If not, I could definitely send that to y'all afterwards. It's hard to be prepared, be prepared for everything, not knowing what questions will arise. And so if there's something that you need to review afterwards, I can definitely give that to y'all. And there's also one more thing on the agenda item, if Judge, you want to read it, or I can read it. Number three is to call for department heads and elected officials' input in our concerns regarding FY 2024, 2025 county budget. If there is a department head or elected official that would like to speak, I would like to recommend that it's specific to the items that were discussed today as in special revenues, grant funds, debt service, the health and life fund, as well as capital projects. Keep in mind next Tuesday, we have a budget workshop to go for the general fund tax rate as well as personnel that affects the general fund. But today, if there's anybody that would like to speak, as in a department head or elected official, it needs to be specific to the items that were discussed today. And at this time, I will ask if there's anybody that would like to speak.
Hearing none, the next item is to adjourn.
Thank you.